Okay, being at 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Apparently, the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with public comments. Anyone who has public comments, feel free to come up to the table.
I guess this is my opportunity.
How was the...
Jeffrey, how are you?
Okay, my name's Jeff Bean. I'm a resident of the city of St. Albans. I own property down on Oak Street and most currently also on Pearl Street. Over the last several months, there's been a change in the noise level that we've been experiencing down in that part of the city. And that's stemming from, the best I can tell, one particular train engine that's setting a resonating sound that's across the entire neighborhood. They leave the engine running 24/7 because obviously it's winter time and I understand diesels are hard to restart once they've shut down. It appears like this particular unit is on a local run from St. Albans to wherever it goes south. Looks like about a six-hour run from, best I can tell. I think it leaves at 10:00 in the morning, comes back about four in the afternoon. The volume of that resonation is sort of going right through the structure. My dad's house is a manufactured home on Pearl Street, right next to Stevens Brook. It's on a slab and it's vibrating into the house to the point where you cannot stay there. I spent about two weeks in there caring for my dad in his final days and I got no sleep. I could see why he moved his bedroom from where it was to another part of the house where it was a little bit quieter. I don't know what to do with the property, the way it is. I asked, I talked to Chad last night, asked him to come over to see what I was experiencing, if it's in my head or not. And you took a desk rule reading at the door or right by the door, if you don't mind sharing that with me or with the rest of the council?
I did go to Jeff. Jeff's probably about 100 yards from the railroad property, so he's away. And there's actually a couple properties and trees and stuff between where the engine is and he is. And it averaged at almost 78. So it was about 77.7, I think, was the average. It got up to 79.8 and I think the low was around 75. But it's not just the noise, it's the vibration. It's like the train sits between the rail, the building and that residential neighborhood and reverberates off from the house. So when you're in the house and you're sitting in a chair, you can actually feel your chair just vibrating just ever so slightly.
You can see ripples in a bowl of water. I put it on the stove and it's just rippling. That's how bad it is and...
Is it unique to your house or...
Whatever neighborhood.
My house has a 30-inch fieldstone foundation. It has so much mass that it doesn't pick up as much, but recently it's been transmitting into our house so that we can hear it.
In your father's house, is it...
My father's house is near to the Brook. It's the one that's right next to Stevens Brook. And it's a clear sight to where the engine yards are, where all the engines are. There's nothing blocking it. Where my house is, there's several buildings that are obviously blocking the sound, but we're picking the resonation, that's just the resonance that's coming from that particular engine. It's at a certain RPM and it's a vibration that just transmits. You sit there and it's a drone. You can hear a drone, mm, mm. We heard, it sounded like an alarm going off or something in the car, in the garage. And what it was, was the tines on the rake were vibrating on the wall against each other, making a... We didn't know what it was. I thought it was an alarm going off. So this is something that has been, we've been experiencing now for probably three or four months. I don't know how it can be addressed, but I think I've reached out by phone to the local dispatch center. I've sent an email to their central office. I've never got any response back from them on that. And the train is still there now. It runs 24/7 and it's all hours of the night. So the desk rule...
Would they relocate it from another siding or something? I mean, you said it's only been three or four months you've been experiencing this. It must have been somewhere else.
With that particular engine, with that particular unit that has come online, I believe that's the one that's causing the grief right now.
It's a specific engine?
Yeah. I mean, I grew up here. I know the engines are there and that's not going to change. That particular one is just unbearable.
It doesn't ever move. You know, it just sits there and idles for such long periods of time. And I think that's what's good. If it was moving back or forth, it wouldn't be so bad. So like Jeff said, if you go up onto Federal Street, you can hardly hear it. And I did, I went up to Federal Street and I parked at the Co-op entrance. Of course, it was closed at that time of night, but I just sat there and you can barely hear it. So it's just like it's picking up like the shape of the building just perfectly and sending the sound waves towards the neighborhood.
I'll ask again, is there another siding possibly that they could relocate this local motor so it wouldn't be so bad?
At one time, they used to park down where the headquarters is, off of Savage, down in that area. And the school complained because of the exhaust fumes from the diesel engines, used to go into the school and they complained about that. And so they moved the engines up into the yard, into the middle of the city. So I would say that there should be another place that they could probably run those engines when they're operating them like that. They're not online, they're just sitting there idling. And presently, they're right in the middle of the city doing so.
So it's been three to four months mainly because of the shift to where they used to be?
Well, no. That particular engine that's come online is causing the issue that I'm here for.
Hasn't been online for three to four months.
Right. So there's something that is, has to be governing how much resonance is...
This sort of goes to your suggestion during our goals and strategies about building that relationship with the railroad and trying to find the right people to have those conversations with. Obviously, you've tried and haven't, you haven't found the right person, but that's something that maybe we should...
Is there a local manager here?
Since Mike Olmstead retired, I don't know who it would be.
Yeah, I don't know either. I know of a name at the Genesee in Wyoming. I also know Charles Hunter really well, so I might be able to ask him if he could point us in the right direction for someone to contact regarding it.
We can chase it. Let's go to work on it and see. So Jeff, I'm confused. You talked about it being a six-hour run.
It appears like they're using it for a local run. So that's the only time that it's not in the yard, it appears to be. Because I've seen that coming back in around between 3:30 to 4 o'clock. It looks like it's returning back into the city.
Is it the chip train, Jeff?
I believe so.
Yeah, because they go out about 9:00.
Chip train, but down to... The word chips.
For Burlington Electric.
I didn't catch all four digits on it, but I know the last two digits, I believe, are 15 on that particular unit.
All right.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before you go, just extend our condolences on the passing of your father.
Yes.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that.
Appreciate that.
So we'll, I mean, we have communication with Jeff, obviously, so we will try to keep informed of what we find out and what solutions there might be.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else for a public comment? Saying none, we'll move...
I just can't seem to see what's being done about the traffic on Upper Weldon Street.
Oh, that's coming up?
That's on our agenda.
Yep, it's next.
We'll move to that and you can come up to the table. So moving on to item number three, which is continued emergency ordinance regarding truck traffic on Upper Weldon Street.
One good thing is the prime trailers that were going up and down, even way before I even got involved in this, have finally looked up and they're going down Fairfield Street now. Because I've gone over Barlow and I've seen them going down. So we've gotten rid of those. And it's not as bad as it was, but there's still some. Like today, I have to be in my living room in order to see them, but today there was two that went down. So I had called the chief of police to see what was going on back in November and I couldn't get him, but I got the other head. And he said, he, I said, "What are you doing about it? You know, I'll call you and tell you they're on the way." But, because I live six hours from the end, so it gives them a little time anyways. And I realize they can't go on a dime, but I said, you know, and he said, "They are stopping some tickets." And he said, "You keep calling." So that's basically what I've been trying to do. But it is better than it was, but it certainly isn't over yet.
So a couple things we've been working on. One was, I'm not sure how much Kate has shared with you, but we had, the sign up on top of the street had failed for a little bit and Marty...
Now, when it's lit up, it seems to be better. Last night, it wasn't lit up again. It doesn't, it isn't constant, it just, whenever.
Is this solar?
I was gonna say, Marty, what, why is this solar?
Solar power.
Yeah.
So we went up and charged it, brought it down to the shop and charged it and it does well. And obviously, with the weather we've been having recently, it's been relying on the solar power and I'm sure it just needs to be recharged again until we get the sunlight on.
The other thing that we've reached out to, we've had conversations with regional planning and police have done as well. One of the police officers had stopped a driver and the driver said his GPS is what directed him down that route. So we've been contacting the GPS companies and trying to educate them that it's not the ideal route, obviously.
Right.
And that we, over time, we're hoping that their GPS program will be changing where we can keep them on the Interstate Access Road. So we know that's a big part of the problem, is the GPS. And so we continue to focus on that. There have been tickets. We've had conversations when they stopped them and finding out it is mainly the GPS. So we haven't forgotten about it. We're plugging away at it. Bob Aver on the street as well calls when there's activity. One was a prime truck that went down just this last week. So I'm not sure what else to tell you other than we haven't forgotten about it and we continue to plug away. From our perspective, it's good to hear that there has been some reduction in that traffic.
Yeah. If I had the time to sit in front of a picture window all day and watch, but I don't have that.
You don't have time to do that?
No, I don't.
Kristen actually emailed me. You saw one, right? That was a prime.
I think it was a prime.
Yeah.
Is it Pepsi or Budweiser?
Yeah, so the, I think that one sort of is the exempt of our ordinance and that is, you know, you're gonna have a Budweiser truck or a Pepsi truck that type going down.
I'm not counting those.
Yeah, those are going down the...
I realize those.
Those are going to Bob's Meat Market for the most part or one of the other markets.
No, I don't.
And we have exempt that, those type of vehicles from the ordinance as well. But yes, the large focus would be on the tractor trailer style.
Right, yeah, that's what I've been going with.
So we're here to continue the ordinance that we have in place so that the police can continue to ticket. And then ultimately, we will, we're at a second reading right now on the ordinance. So the emergency ordinance is just to renew it every month, basically.
Can I ask a question on this, three, four, and five? I thought once we approved the second reading, it was basically, that was it. It's an ordinance. Why are we doing another emergency if we're just gonna turn around one minute later and read it into the book?
You could pass on number three if you'd like.
Okay.
Pass on number three.
I'm wondering if that should have read public hearing, because our packets that we're having a public hearing today on it.
Well, the second reading is the public hearing and that's then four and then five is the vote.
Right. And then it becomes a permanent part of our...
Yeah, Chad, the thinking was if we needed other changes to the second reading, I mean, the emergency would still be in effect. But if you think you're good to go, so...
You're working on getting it permanent?
Yep. We're gonna make it permanent in just a minute.
That street's too near with the tractor trailers, you know.
Did you have anything else you'd like to share with us?
No, I just, I'll give you an update on what's happening. A while ago, when I called the police, there was a dispatcher at night shift and she gave me a hard time. And she says, "There's nothing we can do." And she was really snotty to me. So I... Now, now I...
One of our dispatchers?
Yes. Because the sergeant said to call.
I'd like to bring that up myself, actually. That's a discussion we'll have as well, the customer service aspect of it. So thank you for coming in again and we will continue to plug, yeah, we'll continue to plug away at it.
Okay, thank you.
I move we table number three.
Second.
Are there the favor? Say it.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So move, moving on to number four, which is the second reading of amendments to ordinance prohibiting through trucks on Upper Weldon. Chip Sawyer is here to share that with us.
The second reading is nearly identical to the first, except in section three, we have added deliveries to Barlow Street as one of the exemptions to the prohibition.
Does anyone have any questions for Chip?
So that's not a big deal because from Barlow Street up to the access road, what do we call that, Fairfax Street?
Fairfax Road.
Fairfax Road. Is wide enough for these trucks? Because why wouldn't they just come down Fairfield Street and then go up Barlow Street?
Well, I think they'd just do the U or they do the thing.
They're in the city delivering.
Because if they come down Fairfield and then they come across Barlow, then they're gonna end up having to go down...
Ferris or Rug or something like that?
Yeah, something, one of those, or, yeah. So if they just do the over and then down Fairfield, they can probably go to the other folks. Or if they're coming up, they'll come up across Barlow and then up the upper section of Upper Weldon.
I've never seen, I don't remember the last time I saw a delivery to Bob's, but there might be some that have to sit in the street for a bit while they unload, which means they're facing a certain direction and then they have to keep going.
Yeah, he's not big enough for a turnaround.
Yeah.
Be a hard turn out to Fairfield, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a busy street.
So I move that we adopt the ordinance prohibiting through trucks on Upper Weldon Street.
We have a motion by Chad. Seconded by Jim to approve the ordinance. Any other comments?
I'm glad to see it come to pass. It's, things have gotten better, but I don't, I think we have to keep after it.
Yes, I don't think it'll ever be perfect. There'll always be a truck every now and then.
So I will, I'll just reach out to regional planning again, just make sure they're, continue to stay on that. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 Hearing none, ordinance passes.
Hold on, Chip, is that the ordinance?
It is.
Yes.
Start it from this side, so it ends up with Kristen. Ten years of doing this, if I'm...
Doing this 10 years?
For some reason, I think we lost one with you at one point or something.
No, that's not, that couldn't happen.
We didn't sign it the next month, too.
Had to be someone else. Okay, let's move on to item number...
Six.
Six. Public hearing, we're going to a public hearing on the Council Community Development Block Grant for Maiden Lane. Chip?
Yes. We're going to resubmit our application. As in, as with many BCDP applications, this money is actually going to a nonprofit, Champlain Housing Trust. They go through us to get to the Vermont Community Development Program. However, we're very much involved in this project as well. As you know, it's the Congress maiden lane project. The grant application's for $1 million so that Champlain Housing Trust can purchase 30 new affordable housing units that would be constructed where 10 Maiden Lanes sits today. 10 Maiden Lane currently has 23 apartments in it. Champlain Housing Trust, we're proposing they purchase a new building with 30 affordable housing units. This would be done in concert with other brownfield mitigation and site preparation across the site, the construction of 24 market rate and/or workforce housing units, approximately 24, also on Maiden Lane and the commercial building that's been in discussion on Main Street. So this is a required public hearing, just to make sure we're, you know, letting folks know that we're going to reapply and, you know, take any comments that the city council or the public might have about the project or community development in general. And then there's a resolution for the council to consider afterward.
I think we have one resident looking to comment on this. Mr. Manahan?
It's very good.
Is there any financial risk for us at all on something like this?
Not with this particular grant application. No.
This money actually comes back to us.
How would you view, how would you view that we're going to redevelopment loan fund?
It goes, you know, there's about five and a half million in total expenditures on the project. Two and a half is TIF. And this is part of the sale price that we're selling the land to Snyder, who's selling it to C HD. So we can talk about all of that as we get the development agreements trued out, but this is, you know, this is a great CD application, you know, because it benefits us in many ways.
What is the timeline, Chip?
We have to reapply February 1st and I think there are meetings in April. And then we would know, I think by the end of April, if we have been funded this time.
We were denied before, is that what we're saying?
We were denied before. It was a very competitive round and we were at the early stages of the project at the time. We're much farther along now.
Once we're finished, the public hearing, the motion.
Any other comments on the application?
Okay.
Hearing none. We will oppose the public hearing portion at 6:55.
Okay. If we're moving on to item seven, I would make a motion that the council adopt the resolution for the BCDP grant application for Maiden Lane Housing Project.
Second.
Excuse me.
We have a motion on the floor from Jim, seconded by Chad. Any other comments? Concerns? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Once I heard Mr. Manahan say it was good enough for him, I was sold. A lot more agreeable with you than I was when you were there.
Chip is gonna stay with us to talk about planning for Taylor Park walkways and lighting.
We brought this back before the council last month. We have a full slate of city council members here tonight, though, so it's a great chance. We, you know, the master planning process for Taylor Park, I think, went really well and we got some really good new ideas for the park that could improve it for its many different functions. And one of the things we said all along is that the master plan was not, you know, we weren't making any promises, we weren't gonna make any decisions that would be set in stone and that we would continue to be deliberative as we move forward on anything that could be a potential change to the park. If we're going to do anything that's like what we have in that master plan, the first step would be to come up with a grading plan that includes overall the walkways and the lights and some of the other pieces, the basic fundamental pieces of the master plan, getting a final design on what it would look like. So that as the city decided to build any pieces of the master plan, in whatever phases we decide, we would know where everything matches up. We would know where Phase A ends and in the future where Phase B would begin. So it's a typical grading plan and final design process. So in the spirit of making sure everyone's with us every step along the way, we brought it before the council to just get one more check-in on the walkway plan that came out of the master planning process. It includes on the map that's in the packet, it includes a depiction of approximate locations of where the new lights would go. And it also depicts the possibility of moving some of the monuments in the southern end of the park right up to the new walkway, although that's not necessarily something that has to happen. It would be a good thing to get some engineering done to see how much it might cost and what would be involved with doing that. And that's sort of the idea, is like, we don't really know what we're getting into or what it's gonna cost until we engage in the next phase of engineering. So just sort of seeking the council's input and blessing before we consider seeking proposals for that next step.
With us, we also have Mr. Tom Colvis, Chair of the Parks Committee, still Chair? Want to share anything, Tom?
No, I think Chip said it pretty well. You know, kind of mentioned it last month, too, those are here, that in order to move forward, we have to have this plan on how we're gonna proceed forward and get some of those pieces in place. We talked about the master plan a lot being just that rough sketch from 1,000 feet above. And in order to put some things in place, we also have to make some decisions about what's going to be in certain places in order to be forward with that, so we don't have to dig any, it's gonna be right now, a piece in later, so that the phasing is, you know, comprehensive but also seamless.
We'll come back to you after we vote on, if we are voting on this. You need a vote, Chip, or just... Continue discussion.
I think we don't need a motion, but it would be good to even just, you know, get some nodding heads that it's okay for us to proceed and get proposals for this next phase of engineering.
Perceptual approval and authorization to advance the designs?
Everyone's good on this side?
Well, I'm open to anything advancing, any designs here, but...
I'm okay so far.
So far, that's a key word, key words right there. So move forward, Chip?
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that in.
I'll be honest, I've had constituents in my ward and people that visit St. Albans that are a little skeptical about redesigning the park, so I'm not committing anything, but I'm obviously open to looking at more engineering stuff.
Tom, while we have you, do you have anything to share about the other parks? Anything the Parks Committee is looking at?
Nothing official. We're kind of doing our winter look at everything and, you know, we've got a group who's going to be presenting to us around edible landscaping in a home park, but they're presenting to us in February, so I've seen some of their plans, but they've not presented anything formally to us. And Barlow's, you know, not set in stone, but there's not a whole lot going on there in terms of developments and things. There's some different ideas on that back corner, closest to where Quig Court is, where there's kind of nothing happening. It's kind of the shadows, they'll grow trees and stuff and trying to do something there to clean that up a little bit and get better use instead of just being a little corner of the park. But kind of working on this, see how some other plans develop elsewhere to see if those things might work in this spot.
Thank you. We'll move on to number nine, which is consideration of adoption of goals and objectives. We had that on the agenda back in December, I guess, and we had minimal turnout on the council, so we wanted to make sure we had the full council here to have that discussion, so we tabled it until tonight. so we tabled it until, until tonight. So, Dom, if you wanna take that over?
That's pretty much it. I think I've tried to capture everything we discussed in our goal-setting session and the subsequent emails.
It looks pretty complete to me, the listing here, so.
Did we say we were gonna look at the Aldis Street Railroad crossing there? Was that, is that in there somewhere?
That's actually the last one under operations on the second page.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, turn it over.
Yeah. Okay.
Because that was, that was one of the things that I really wanted to have done, is the, improve the crossings, and the Aldis Street was awful.
That was a late addition after the, after the fact by Chad, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's awful. I hate to go up that street, so. I'd move that we adopt the 2019 goals and objectives that the council had proposed and put together.
I'll second that.
Any other comments?
Twenty nineteen, I don't know if I said that or not.
I think you did.
Questions? Just one question, Dom. How do you, how do you proceed moving forward? Is this something we'll need on quarterly semi?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I guess I don't wanna wait till a year from now.
No, we check in with it generally, you know, every quarterly or every four to six months. Kinda depends on, I think, what's on our agenda. As we get towards big decisions, we circle back to this to see if it was in the game plan. If I'm trying to persuade you of something, I'll probably reference this. So it has a way of naturally coming up, I think, so.
Any other questions?
The other thing I should say is we then share this with department head, and there's some things in here that go beyond the manager, and, you know, it's important for the department heads to know that much of this is the marching orders for the whole, the whole management team, not just the manager and the council.
I already made a motion.
Three seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the general fund budget discussion.
Keying off of our discussion last week, there's a couple of items in front of you this evening. The first is a revised memo. There's one change at the bottom on the appropriations. I had the wrong nonprofit in there, so we have updated that to reflect the intended recipient, Martha's Kitchen. The other item before you is a request that came in from the Veterans Valet Service. This came in this morning. As I understand it, when the veterans created this program, they agreed to do two things. They said they would make a fifty thousand, they would raise fifty thousand dollars for the hospital's capital campaign, and they would start up and continue to operate the Veterans Valet Service. They've approached both the city and the town individually for two thousand dollar contributions towards that fifty thousand dollar goal. It's one-time money. So with all of that as a backdrop, then circling back to this updated cover memo, the budget proposal, as you'll recall from last week, would require a two-point-two percent increase in the tax rate. Typical homeowner would see a forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cent increase. The proposal has a number of benefits and notable features. We've got about two hundred thousand dollars in dispatch funds from a new contract, which we anticipate with the town of Milton. We've added two hundred and forty-eight thousand to create the capacity for rent on the new police facility. We're proposing to continue with our existing staff infrastructure and public works for now. We've made some increased investments in the public works capital plan, such as a payload or utility truck in the back. We've increased the tree removal and tree planting budgets by five grand each. There's thirty-three thousand in new money to deal with some capital needs within the recreation department at Barlow, at Hardak, and concluding the pool discussion, ten thousand each for those. Based on the feedback at the January seventh meeting, we added two thousand for Martha's Kitchen. We added ten thousand dollars for the crosswalk strobes that Jim requested. We've broken out the city hall rental revenues within the recreation budget, so we can track those more closely. And in order to preserve the budget as it exists, with the two-point-two percent increase in the tax rate, if the council's inclined to support the veterans, I'd propose that we handle that within the FY nineteen budget, and we can bang it out quicker. Those are my updates. That's all I have for tonight.
What does the ten thousand dollars for the crosswalk strobes get us?
That's our estimate of the new crosswalk strobes, so we've got two existing right now, I believe, Chip.
There's one on Federal Street.
There's three.
Federal Street, Lake Street, and what's the other?
You got two on Lake Street. You got one right across from the Myland entrance, and you got one up further in front of Food City.
Both strobes?
Those are the same one. Oh, yeah, on either side, on either side.
No, no, yeah, there's, there's the, the, yeah, both entrances, they drive in and out of, there's those strobe lights.
Yeah.
So you got two on Lake, yeah.
So we have four, okay.
We have four total. And I'd introduce a cautionary tale for these.
There's one down in front of the old Candy's building, and then there's one up.
They begin to lose their effectiveness if they're everywhere.
They can't have too many, yeah.
And this isn't a commitment to do it, this is a commitment to budget the funds in case we wanna do it.
Okay, yes.
So.
And I think I had indicated I'd like to see one at the, the crosswalk at the town central school area there. I mean, I really wanna make sure these kids are safe when they're crossing, when they're crossing there, it's not there. It may not solve it, but it may help it.
And the, that is in the goals and strategies as well, pedestrian safety and crossing.
Yeah. So, you know, I think we'll circle back to, if that's the consensus, if that's the priority spot, we'll circle back to the design and figure out how we would do it there, and make sure with the traffic engineers that it's a good spot, and it confirms with the future aspects, et cetera. So, you know, we don't have all of that information together right now, that's just a budgeting exercise.
And how much, Dom, I guess I'm not clear, how much, where is the, what were the veterans looking for, for a?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
And we're, I'm suggesting that within the current fiscal year, I think we can absorb that, so. If it, you know, if it's okay, you can embed that within your motion if you're.
May I just separate that one out?
Sure.
Let me do that. Why don't we take the veterans' one first?
Are we, what are we about ready to do here?
My suggestion is we take the request, since this came in after the budget discussion, and Dom wants to on this year, what, do we approve the request from the veterans group for this year's contribution of two thousand dollars?
All right, and then we're still gonna go through council discussion and public comment on the rest of the budget?
Yes. So I would, having experienced the veterans' assistance, you know, as recovering up there and being really high on their, on what they're doing, I would move that we grant to the veterans at Northwest America Center the two thousand dollars that they requested and that come out of this year's budget. I see something.
Second. Any other comments?
It is a great program. It's very well received on campus.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. They really are, I really impressed them.
I guess I'm, I'm surprised the number of ridership isn't on the letter, but it's, you know what it is?
I think it was like three thousand or?
Yes, that sounds about right, and it has been growing.
But you know, it's not just the ridership. They are stationed inside the main, the main entrance, and they're, they're there, they'll help people get in and out of the entrance, the dispatcher there, and they're just really, really.
And they, and they do parked cars and?
Yeah, yeah.
It's more than just the?
Absolutely, it's more than just a bus.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor of the contribution, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, move forward, Dom. Thank you. Now we're gonna look at the, the budget discussion. So Dom has given an overview. I think it's, we covered pretty much what we talked about last week. Seems to be a fair budget for sure. I guess I'm, is there anyone in the audience that has a, any comments? Hearing none, let's turn to the council.
One of the things we didn't talk about was the, how's our obligations going with the pension funds? Is Tom still there?
He just stepped out.
He just stepped out. He's coming back.
We didn't get a chance to go over that in committee, because we're under some time constraints, and I forgot about it last week. And I just want to, Dom, you must know that.
Yeah, yeah, we've been ratcheting it up. I mean, the strategy, as you recall, was to ratchet it up slowly and to use the market gains. Market was doing okay until recently. The, hey, Tom? Tim was just asking for an update on how we're doing on the pension and increasing, decreasing the unfunded liability.
Sure, so the pension plan is roughly sixty-five percent funded, the old city plan. The funds are managed by our own investment advisor, and they're invested with funds through potential. There's an analysis that's on part of our audit called the CASP sixty-eight analysis. And what that, what they do is they take a real conservative approach, they look at your assets on the books as of today, and that's your numerator, your denominator is your total liabilities expected in the future. So we have about four million dollars in the books today, and we expect to pay a little over six in long-term benefits. That is the most conservative analysis that could possibly be done. It does not take into account the fact that the city has put a couple hundred thousand dollars into the pension consistently, so there's no, there's no assumption of future investment by the city, there's no assumptions about investment return, it's simply what we have today over what we're expected to pay. If you add to this simply, the budget has two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars towards the pension, general fund pays about a third of that.
What was it, two fifteen?
Yeah.
And what was it last year?
Two fifteen.
So it's level.
Yeah, so if you, if you add to our existing funds, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars going forward for the long term, our pension is essentially fully funded, and there's no situation where I can see, even with dramatic market losses, that we're gonna have to go up substantially from the two fifteen, if at all. In fact, I think in ten years, the conversation will be about reducing it. And our investment advisor, sorry, let me back up. Under some rules adopted by the council before my time and then updated a few years ago, over four million dollars, there's a sixty-forty rule, sixty percent can be the stock market as a max, and forty percent is in fixed investments. We were at that ratio for a long time, and we, we did well in the bull market. And about six months ago, our investment advisor called us and said, you know, I'm feeling like the market is, is not great, but it's still going up, but the fundamentals aren't sound, I've had a bad feeling, so we reverted back to sixty percent fixed income. So these recent losses have hurt us less, so he's earning his money. So, you know, something I said to Dom, when you look at the pension from a long-term perspective is, if you don't know the math, you don't know the details, to say that we're sixty-five percent funded on paper, doesn't sound great, but if you look at what the city has contributed and you, and you add in that basic math with a pretty basic rate of return, the pension is the least of my concerns.
Tom, at some point, because we're, no one's getting the pension anymore, right?
No one.
The closed plan, yeah.
The closed plan, right, so eventually that, the amount needed will be in decline.
Right. This year, we're actually at our expected peak in terms of what the pension plan will play for folks in it, and that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The last four or five years, the pension plan has been around four million at year end, we've paid, we've invested our four million, made a good rate of return, added the city contribution of about two fifteen, and all that's, the gains from that are about equally paid out for employees. And that's good, because every year, your liability goes down a little bit with the closed plan, so as I said earlier, not the least of my concerns. The city's gonna have to level fund it for a while, and I think the worst-case scenario is we come back in a year or two and say, well, we should go to maybe two hundred and twenty thousand dollars across the funds, but I don't foresee any situation where we come back to and say, we misread this, we need to go to three hundred and three fifty. I think the number we have is a good number, and I think we're, we're set here, we just gotta play the string out.
We came up with that number a while ago because we were underfunding it.
Yeah.
And if I recall that meeting, I don't know if all of us were here, we met over with the auditor, not the auditor, with the investor next door, and it was, I thought he, it was a three-year cap or a four-year at a level. We're there, we're at our fourth, if I recall, that's our fourth year, that was my last term, end of my last term. And you're saying that we still need to be at two fifteen for another ten years?
I think the city will be, will need to be in that range for, for a while.
You're saying we don't need to increase it, but it's okay.
I'm saying, I don't, we need to increase it a penny for a long time, and I could see some modest decreases. The challenge is, we're just at, you know, you know, the old, go back to college statistics, the law of large numbers, we're just at that point, we're making it, because this difficult analysis is tough, because we've got, you know, we don't have five hundred people in the plan earning benefits. So it's a little hard to predict, but two fifteen, I think, is the max we'll need to go for, probably forever.
So do we?
We see it coming down a little bit over time.
So do we know when the last person took the pension? How long ago?
So we have, we have a couple active employees who are in it still earning benefits, so still earning credits. We also have six or eight active employees where they're in the plan, but they're not earning any more benefits, so we know exactly what they're gonna get when they retire, it's just a matter of when they choose to take it. We've actually got one person who's, who's ineligible for the plan, and I've sent her letters and letter messages and, and nothing back. But we have, we have a really good, we have a really good strong analysis about what their protective benefit payments will be, and if anything, they're really conservative, so.
Tim, you were trying to figure out what the tail is on this thing, how long it goes out?
That was gonna be my next question.
It goes out, it goes out forty or fifty years.
That's okay.
Yeah, the challenge will be, I think, not funding the plan, but at some point, the challenge will be finding someone to administer it. There's pretty complex, you know, tax calculations and all sorts of administrative force power you need, and at some point, with so few participants, I could see potential saying, you know, once his plan winds down, when it gets to two million dollars in assets, they might just say, sorry, but not worth our trouble. We're a long way from that.
Okay.
Tom?
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else have questions that we didn't touch on last time?
Move to approve the FY twenty general fund budget as amended and presented.
Seconded by Michael. Any further comments? Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the budget as presented, say aye.
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 And the opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Is this, um... Curry? Is this Curry's?
No, it's me.
You?
It's kind of the main event of the evening here. So, we have before you the town meeting warning. It's been approved by Curry, Tom, and myself. We need a council motion and then signatures to wind the annual meeting.
Motion to approve the adoption... or motion to approve the 2019 town meeting warning.
Second. Any comments? Everyone's good.
So, what's the date I have to have my signature, is it Curry? '28, thank you.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
Do you have any, uh...
No. Yeah, I got one, my wife.
No, she crossed her name off.
I didn't think she was going to sign it.
I had a little trouble with that last time I read.
Okay.
I think I find 30 people will like me, but, I mean, we'll try.
Okay, so we'll adopt the warning for 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Warrant for March 5th passes. You're going to pass that around to Dom for signatures. Tom, your backup, consider proposed modifications of invoice approval process. I know we talked about this also last month, but we will keep looking.
So, I included in your packet the cover memo, which I think outlines how staff proposes to revise the process if you agree. And I've included in that some recent warrants where we highlight example expenses that would be essentially moved to the staff queue. Everything would remain on the full warrant set the council would approve. And if any point the council wanted to change this, you obviously have that right to change it, reject it in full, do as you see fit, being the council. But our thinking here is that the sheer volume of invoices and... Sometimes the city charter is just a little bit in conflict with modern ways of doing business. Doesn't mean we need to change the charter. It just means we need to relook at the charter and relook at the way we do business. And so, this doesn't violate the charter, we believe. Our Paul Giuliani, who's the city's bond counsel and advisor on legal issues that have financial implications, has looked at this proposal, and he agrees that it's within the spirit and the law of the charter. So, that's a proposal before you. Again, these would still be on the full warrant, so you'd still see every single expense, just fewer in real time and fewer of the routine business type.
So, it's council meeting. If anyone had a problem, wanted to just pick up the warrant and...
Pick up the warrant.
It's all an aligned item, yeah.
And say, from now on, we want to bring this vendor back.
To be sure, it's not an arduous process to approve warrants, not now. And I don't think it ever was. I mean, other than having to come into the building and do a whole stack. Now, we can do them right from our homes and our offices.
Right, but to ReadSoft...
But to see warrants where we are questioning Public Works Director's decision to buy a 50-pound bag of sodium bicarbonate, that to me is meaningless. And I'm not going to question that or whether the police chief needs to get a new vest.
Right.
Or electric bill or gas bill. I mean, you know, I mean that...
But there are certainly things I would like to see, and I think that you've pared them down here substantially, which is excellent. And you might be able to do a few more after we've gotten the hang of what we're seeing now. So, I think this is a great opportunity for us to let the mechanism that we've set up here run its course. I mean, I'm sure when the charter was around, we were looking at each one of those things. Now, we have six different sets of eyes on this stuff, which are more skilled than ours. So, if there's going to be a problem, someone there is going to see it before it gets to our feet. And then, we've got the backdrop of what we have in front of us tonight to bring one of these items up to our attention. So, I'm in favor of this.
Me too.
And I would just hope that people understand that we'll have that opportunity to look at what the spending is on each of the warrants, but that right now, two city councilors, every... for every single expense, the $5 that gets spent to buy, you know, paper clips, has to go through the same clicking on the ReadSoft software that, you know, the $16,000 invoice to a consultant or the half a million dollars on the sidewalk, you know, that they just... they carry the same weight, and without context, it just... it makes the whole thing kind of meaningless. And that pairing this down just makes so much sense so that those really meaningful oversight functions of the city council actually mean something. It's not...
Opposed to the routine expense.
Yeah, just clicking through things that we don't really need to have an extra pair of eyes on.
And this would take us probably two or three weeks to go into ReadSoft and go with the system and make changes going forward. So, it would be overnight.
Okay. As long as none by my turn.
So, this was one of the things that I didn't know about when I became a councillor.
I'm up for some.
I didn't know I was going to be doing this every month. So, I've really found it enjoyable, and you learn a lot about what happens in the background by reading them. My only thing is just make sure to look them over because I don't really look over what the expenses are per se. I really just double-check it, and I usually find five or six mistakes in the entire month. I mean, we're talking a lot of checks, and they're usually pennies, but, you know, just make sure that we're checking them off. And it's usually those routine mundane things that... What ends up happening is usually reads the wrong line, so it'll read it before or something else. So, because I think the software does a lot of it for them.
Yeah. And then, we find everything that goes into ReadSoft, our system to pay bills, and that system is pretty good at catching errors, duplicate invoice numbers, things like that.
Okay. Any other comments? Jim?
No, I'm fine.
Motion to approve modification of invoice approval process.
Second.
I think we've had a fair discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposition? Hearing none, motion passes, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve minutes 12, 10, 18.
We have a motion on the floor. We need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Motion to approve minutes from 12, 10, 18. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposition?
Standing.
Word two.
Me too.
Six.
Word one.
How many people hear that?
No, we didn't. Entertainer motion for special meeting 1719.
Second.
Going to move by Chad, seconded by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? None. Motion passes.
Motion to approve warrants 12, 14, 18.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim to approve warrants from 12, 14, 18. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposition? Hearing none. Moving on to 12, 26, 18 warrants.
Motion to approve 12, 26.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Marie to approve warrants from 12, 26, 18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Hearing none. Motion passes.
1231.
Motion by Tim for warrant 1231, 18.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none. Warrants 1231 passes.
Motion to approve 1719.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Marie to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? None. Warrant for...
Motion to approve 111.
11? Is there a second? Trying to keep up?
No, I don't know. I'm just loving watching Kristen just put in a different person for every second. I wanted to second, just one for all of us.
We have a motion from Tim, seconded by Jim for warrant 11119. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? Hearing none. Warrant for 1111 passes. Moving on to mayor's report. This was a quick conversation that Chip and I and Dom had. Personally, I'm not a big fan of the re-interviewing of folks who are already on a board. So, we have moved forward with... you have a memorandum pretty much stating who's up. Chip, I've had... has had conversations with those individuals, correct, Chip?
Yes.
And everyone that is in your memorandum is willing to renew, re-up, with the exception of Jackie Deloria, who has stepped down. So, for the planning commission of the Stan Burden, Amy Perdis, and Luke Richter, who was an alternate, would become a full seat, so those would be the three on the chart just for us to approve.
I would move that we approve Stan Bryden, Amy Perdis, and Luke Richter to be... to renew on the planning commission with the term expiring till 31, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion from Jim, seconded by Chad regarding candidates for the planning commission. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes, so Chip, you will reappoint Stan, Amy, and Luke, or add Luke, I should say. And if you would... I think you've already done it, but if you send me Jackie's mailing address, I will be sure to send her a thank you note for her time. And we're moving on to the downtown board. Once again, these are recommendations made by Chip through discussions with the downtown chair, I believe.
Yeah, with the downtown board, because of their merged functions with SAC, they vote on a recommendation to the city council. So, they have passed a recommendation to the council to appoint Vladimir, Elizabeth, and Emily.
So, one returning, one alternate, and one new.
Yeah.
So, there's one seat still vacant, or...
Yes, there will be one still vacant. We'll find someone.
Yep, okay.
I would move to appoint these individuals to the downtown board with terms expiring on 12, 31, 2021.
Seconded. Seconded by Chad. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? None. Motion passes to appoint the three individuals to the downtown board. We're going to spend a little time on that, Dom, maybe. Those are all renewing. I guess I just don't want to lose track of when we have new candidates, how we might want to handle that moving forward. I don't think we've come up with a concrete plan to do that. I know personally, I'm not a fan of braving out in front of us for candid questions, and I think there's a better way to do it. I'd just like to firm that up at some point, and once again, I think that's in our goal and strategy, so...
Yeah.
Firm up a plan to do that. I don't know how others feel about the interview process before the council. I guess I'm open to seeing what people's thoughts are.
I mean, if there's recommendations from members of the board and, I mean, like, I assume that Vladimir Garabey was a new candidate. We're not interviewing him. We had recommendations, I think, from the board that he'd be appointed. That's okay with me. I mean, I'm fine with that. I read his... you know, I read his application. He looks like a very high-quality candidate. I think he's going to be a good asset on that board, a good asset for the city, and I'm fine with it without having to have him sit here and ask him, like you said, standard questions.
So, I think we'll keep... you know, the... some of the options are you delegate that authority to the board they're appointing to and take a recommendation like we do with the downtown board, or you peel off a couple of members of this board to do the interviewing. The... One of the things, I guess I would mention, you know, just texturally, is it's probably one of the... I share the mayor's frustration, but I think it's also one of the most important functions of the council in making sure that you have people on these boards who are aligned with the council's vision. And I'm not sure the process that we've been following necessarily does that.
Right.
But we've had a number of instances where folks on the board took positions contrary to the city. And so... or embarrassed the city with their behavior. So, I... it's an important responsibility. The other thing I think we need to do is particularly as folks are coming back up for renewal, I almost think that's a more important one than the initial one because they've got some experience on it, you know? We've all seen how bad people on a board can run a bunch of good people off.
Have a track record that we can look at, so...
Yeah.
And then, we take the recommendation of the director to into account.
Yeah. The staff persons, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's really important. So, I think we could just kind of continue to feel our way through as they come up, try some of those things. I'm not sure we have enough information to write a policy on it or approach. We just sort of begin to try some things and figure out what works.
I mean, I don't think... I think a conversation over coffee with two council members would probably go a lot further than, you know, standard questions.
Yeah.
In this environment. I mean, I think it'd just be a more honest conversation.
Yeah.
More in depth, for sure.
Yeah.
So, maybe that's something we can look at.
Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for a subcommittee, I'd volunteer to be on it.
For the coffee piece of it?
Yeah.
Coffee and cookies?
Coffee and cookies, that would be, yeah.
And the city credit card, right?
Yeah.
City credit card, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Keep that on the warrant.
Yeah, make sure that stays in ReadSoft.
Yeah.
Make a motion to appoint Gary Taylor as deputy town health officer.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Seconded by Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposition? Hearing none. Motion passes. May hear...
I reluctantly use that word "town" in all these things. It could be "city."
But he has to be... he has to be approved by the town as well. Is that how I read that?
No.
No, the...
There's no deputy city.
No. The Vermont state statutes continue to have trouble recognizing cities and villages. They use "town" as the generic term.
I thought that was a...
I think I was town... deputy town health officer for 14 days by default. They didn't send me a badge though this time. They just didn't send me a badge.
Yeah, there were a lot... it was a rash of safety orders down around Double Bar.
There was.
By the way, are we the local board of health?
Yes.
So, he's the chair. He's going to sign it here.
Oh, are we getting warrants? Last one, you're signing?
Think we can, sure.
You want to do that? I mean...
Yeah. We get those together.
Chip, just also, I'd like to take note that Mike Bluen, Sharon Holcomb, and Katie Collins are all stepping down to the downtown board.
Yep.
I got... I know Mike has been a longtime server for 10, 12, 14 years, maybe?
I think he was on the initial board that got the designation.
So, I will... I will send them notes as well. So, a couple of things. Kristen, maybe more for you, as we ran into the situation on the dog hearing last meeting or two meetings ago where we were ahead of schedule and they showed up on time. So, should we, someplace across the top, times are approximate times, please? If you're ahead of time, 15 minutes in advance or maybe even 30 minutes in advance, just to... Just so people aren't stuck to that timeframe, for sure.
Yeah. Something, all times are approximate, please be a half hour prior to your scheduled hearing or whatever.
The other thing I... Mrs. Lennox brought up, and I probably would have not mentioned it, but, you know, I've been into the police station to pick something up or drop things off, and I think there's... There could be a need for some customer service framing. Not above outgoing. You're made to wait, and I understand they got dispatching, but just not... My experience has been not dis...
just not, my experience has been not disp, having good interaction.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing, hello, how are you today? No, no interaction.
It would be nice to get a smile, or.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know how you feel about that, but I just wanted to sort of.
Hopefully we get to our new facility, the space, the window space would be much.
That plays a role.
Much larger than what you got now, and you have to kind of peek around the corner to see anybody.
I think that's partially for, like, yeah.
It's security is what they're worried about, is, you know, the points are well taken, and I've had similar experiences. Some of it is a design issue in that they don't always see you there.
Right, no, I get, I get.
Some of it's cultural, you know, and it's in our goals and objectives. Most of that, I think, was focused on the calls coming in, not so much the experience in the lobby, so.
Right.
But this is helpful, I'll talk to the chief and make sure that troops know that that's part of their job as well.
Customer service, yeah.
I wondered too about the ordinance specifically, because this happened to me as well. I, you know, I don't know what the process is when, okay, we have this new ordinance which authorizes tickets to be given on our street, and then both Mrs. Lemna and I found people who didn't know. So, you know, how, how does it happen that the troops are alerted?
You're saying people didn't know that that's something that we had moved forward with?
Yeah, in the department, not, you know, the public, but like, the dispatchers and.
Yeah, I think dispatchers wear a lot of different hats, and I think that message, for whatever reason, wasn't on Gary and Jason's mind, that they, that they were going to be fielding those calls. I think they were more focused on it, just surmising here, they were more focused on it on the ground with the officers doing the enforcement, and not the dispatchers getting the call in.
Yep. I think it's important with this one, because, you know, we've been telling people on the street to call the dispatcher when you, you know, when you see a truck, so you're, you know, we're sending all these calls, and we're almost setting that team up for failure and not letting them know.
I agree with the assessment. And we'll get on it.
We're out of the business? Yeah, I'd like to take the pulse on the councils. I'd like to get rid of the winter plantings altogether.
On Main Street, mean?
Everywhere. On all the, all the buttouts, they're, they get run over by the plows, they get piled up with snow, they're very cheaply put together, they don't even look good.
And I'll, and I'll continue my frustration with the sightlines coming out of the Corales parking lot on Lake Street, because they're right there and you can't see.
Does everybody know what those are?
Yeah.
Those are.
You're talking about getting rid of the flower pots altogether?
All together.
So they're going to have to haul them out of there in the fall?
Well, and I, I think they get, if, I mean, if you go look at them now, I mean, many of them are, unless the city cleaned them up, they're, they're plowed in, they're moved around, they're tipped over, and all they are is a piece of cedar staked into a bucket of mulch.
I mean, I don't care if the bucket stays there, but, but the cedar, I just don't see.
It just looks ugly.
Just take that out.
It has, has no appeal at all.
Plant, plant in the spring, and don't, we don't need to do anything.
Three other seasons, beautiful.
Yeah.
But I think we're, we run too harsh of winters up here, there's road salt everywhere, there's maneuverability issues on the sidewalks with the snow piling up around them, they're hard to clean out, and it's just, to me, not worth it. We've got a beautiful park, the park looks nice, I don't think we need those things in the half dozen areas they're in.
How many bump outs are there with pots? Half a dozen, eight?
Yeah, about, I'd say.
But the only bump out that actually has a parking lot entrance and exit is at the Corales.
Four or five?
Just a pulse, you know, I'm just, I just, that's just my opinion, I mean, I, maybe everyone else wants to keep it.
Jim, the trimming didn't help, it wasn't enough?
I mean, the greenery, no, it wasn't enough, but it's, I mean, you still have to get up almost into the road to be able to see both ways.
Marty, what's your take on pulling those pots every fall and storing them sometimes?
Do we need to pull the pots? Couldn't we just pull the greenery?
I think so.
That's what I was thinking.
I think so.
I don't think we need to pull the pots.
I heard Tim, I heard Tim saying that they get plowed up and could be damaged, and.
Yeah.
I think, I think Tim's right, when, like, the other night, we pulled 60 loads of snow out of downtown, they, those corners are tough to get into with a piece of equipment, and inevitably, some pots get turned over and stuff, I mean, we can pull them out and then put them back in in the spring.
Why don't we, let's let his team handle the operations?
Yeah, absolutely.
The sentiment is the council is, clean it up, get rid of that stuff.
I think, once you get rid of the mums, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Well, I had a similar thought, I, I don't, just in terms of thinking long-term, is there a way to make that sort of decoration stuff more sustainable? Because we spend a lot of money on the decorations, and it looks great, but if there were things that you could do that would be more permanent and not have to be pulled out and replanted every time, seems like maybe we could save some money over time. I don't know what that is, but.
Like, perennial plant plants as opposed to annuals, yeah.
No, bulbs, in the spring, yeah.
Hard.
It is hard.
It gets a lot of salt, that's the thing, is.
Yeah.
Look, I, we, we've got an award-winning streetscape. Let me take care of the winter stuff.
Yeah.
And let's circle back, could we do that? You know, the, I don't want to have a baby with the bathwater thing here.
True.
You know, the, the reason that, the bump outs are all about the pedestrians, they're supposed to make the cars slowly creep out and look. You know, they've, they've been designed by all the people that do this all over the country, and I'm not saying that that means they didn't get it right, you know, and, and whether we, the size of the bushes in there, that's a decision that Marty and I and Heath have made, and that's been a continual source of frustration. But we got, we're heavily invested in the core design here. So we, let's get rid of the shrubbery in the winter.
Part of, part of the concern with the taller plants is in the spring and summer, where if you have a smaller, a smaller child, you can't see them unless they're, until they're into the road just about, I mean, those, other than that, I didn't see a problem with those.
Yeah.
I don't think, I just don't think they're conducive to the snow and the, and the salt and the, and the plowing and the, and the stuff that we have to do, the removal.
Same, Marty, you said it could be moved, that's fine, they'll move them in the winter.
Tim, anything else?
Nope.
Michael?
I did want to say that the legislative session's underway as of last week, and Mr. Mayor, if you're interested in me extending an invitation at some point to give an update before we get too long, I can get the other senators and the other representative, Katie Too, here to talk about what our plans are, if you'd like.
There is a legislative breakfast on the 28th.
That is correct, so we'll be doing monthly legislative breakfasts. I had the honor of being elected the vice chair of the Franklin County delegation. Representative Dickinson, the town is the chair. The first legislative breakfast will be at the Swanton Village complex, Monday, the 28th of January, at not, excuse me, at eight o'clock, yep. So we're going to alternate Mondays and then Saturdays, so the second one will be a Saturday in February, and the March Monday one will be here at City Hall.
I would just say regarding the Swanton one, that it's, I think the intent is to have a business plant to it, you have Betsy Bishop from the Vermont Chamber coming up to talk about what their agenda may be too, so it's, not, not that other discussion won't happen, but it will be, good chuckle, we'll be talking about the business agenda.
These legislative breakfasts are well-attended, but they're a great opportunity for people that don't know that, to really see all of your legislators in one spot and express any concerns you have about the things that are going on in Montpelier, or things you think they should be doing for you. And, and they listen, and, you know, we have, we have a great group of legislators, and I, I go to everyone, pretty much.
So just to follow up on that, Michael, so we are, Franklin County has three representatives on the transportation committee?
That's correct.
Michael.
Barbara Murphy.
Barbara Murphy.
And Representative Savage.
Ryan Savage from Swanton. So I think the timing may be right to, and I'd like to talk to you, Dom, about it, this is sort of a tune I've been singing for a while here, is that our border crossing is the only border crossing of a major thoroughfare coming into Vermont, which does not have a welcome center. I think if we were to get a welcome center back at the border, it would enhance what we're doing here in the city immensely. Currently, the first stop is halfway to Georgia, and once they're stopping there, we're not getting one. So if we can educate, and I know money's tight, but if we can start having the discussion again with three on the transportation committee, maybe we can strategize, Mike and I have talked about, sitting down and strategizing what that might look like, because I think it would be huge for Swanton, St. Albans.
Where was it when it was here before?
I thought we had Highgate Springs, didn't we have in the Highgate Springs at one point?
Yeah, there was a Highgate, it's torn down.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't realize it was torn down.
There's a chain link fence around where it was, so.
Okay.
So that, and so, if you look at, I mean, 91, Route 4, coming into New Haven, I mean, they all have, they all have welcome centers.
What was the rationale? This is going back to the Dean administration, isn't it?
Yeah, so the, the idea was to get rid of rest areas. So the rest areas, as people's habits changed and they became more and more costly, and for, for less and less perceived benefit, and the state decided to disinvest in a number of rest areas, you know, going back to the 90s. And that, the, the real pitch that needs to be made is that there's a commerce and tourism benefit, and that that welcome center shouldn't be seen as, you know, just another place to stop and use a restroom. So I think it will be a difficult conversation, because the culture within the agency of transportation is very much to stay away from spending money and needing to maintain the constant facility of a rest area. But I think if we are, if we can strategize with partners, and there might be some private entities that are willing to partner with the state on maintaining a welcome center, that's probably going to be the most viable scenario, so we should talk about that and make a pitch.
But with, I mean, you did have a new one outside of Brown, in Gillum, not Gillum, um.
Gill Hall?
Gill Hall, just up 90, or 93, yeah. That was a $7 million expenditure, what, just two or three years ago, right?
I was.
Seven million?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was hearing part of the rabble-rousers, I was hearing part of the rabble-rousers that fought to keep our two rest areas up here on, on the interstate open, because they were, Governor Dean had, and those were scheduled to be closed, and we were able to keep them.
So to Michael's point, yeah, I, I agree, it's a, it's a, it's not just a rest area, it's not just a toilet, it's more than that now. If you look at what they've done in, in those other rest areas down in Gill Hall and, and Chitney County, I mean, and, and the usage is, I think, is, is very high, so.
Maybe the, you know, maybe if they'd fund that, we'd operate it, you know, and put together a team of locals, do like a, you know, a regional state partnership type of thing, something like that.
Can our, can our facility be a welcome center, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I think that, we, we've had those conversations, Jim, whether you get people off the interstate to use a, to use a welcome center, I don't know.
It's not happening elsewhere, is it? I mean, I don't know.
What's that?
Getting people off the, I mean, this is the only.
Well, I mean, without, without being prompted by an actual welcome center, I think a lot of people will continue to just go by.
Right, right.
But I, I think we might call on you, Dom, for some support in the State House when, when, and if we get that far down there. Anything else, Michael?
That's it for now.
Okay.
Just a quick, you know, look ahead to the In Good Taste event that'll be here, it's another nice way to showcase City Hall, and, what is it, February?
February 1.
February 1st?
Friday the 1st.
Just a great event, I think it's one of the nicest ones that gets held in this. That'd be good.
So just to sort of take off on that, we touched a little bit on it, but the, the last night was a, I think everyone's feeling was is it was a huge success. We're going to do a recap on it here this week, I believe, but the turnout was, in all areas, was excellent, so we're optimistic for another, another year, so. Chad? I'll go last.
Come on, Chad.
It wasn't your last month, so I have a list. Piece of paper.
I just had one little note here, has there been a problem with the crosswalk lights at Mylan and Food City?
Oh.
Because they seem to be flashing.
Yeah, the north one was flashing.
They had wrong with the contacts, so we ordered new, our electrician has looked at it and had to order some parts.
Okay.
The one on the north side was blinking.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay, thanks.
Where I thought you were going with that, and I've spoken to Marty about the two push buttons on the top of Lake Street, north and south, do not work either.
Oh.
And you've looked at that as well?
Same thing, it was the moisture getting into the, so we ordered new bush contacts.
Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Jim?
From a, from a county perspective, on, on January 30th, we'll be swearing in our new county officers, we have a couple of changes, we have a new county probate judge, Judge Larry Bruce is retiring, and Von Como, who's a local attorney and has a practice in Nisburg, will become the new probate judge, we have a new sheriff, Sheriff Robert Norris is retiring, and Roger Longivan, who has been working for the city, I guess, as a school resource officer, is now going to become the new sheriff. We're going to swear them in on the 30th, and they take office in February 1.
And that will be at the courthouse?
At the courthouse, it'll be noon, at noon on the 30th, we'll be doing the ceremony with Judge Melon. More than likely, we'll have a jury trial going on that day, so we need to do it during the noon hour, so.
Tom, any other last comments?
No, good.
Anyone from the audience?
Well, I got my list here.
Oh.
What's going on, look at this list.
I'm sitting here thinking, boy, I think I'm forgetting something.
You should have submuted with Jared Fast.
So now that we have Tom here, I have a couple of things for the public.
So the, the agenda has us adjourning by 8:30.
Yeah, I'll be out of here at 8:05.
You might make it, okay.
So I want, first thing I want to do is thank Public Works. You know, the, the small amounts of snow that are extended over three days are more a pain in the butt than the one foot that gets dumped in a night, so I thought they've done an excellent job keeping things clear, so. They went by it in the morning at about 4:30 on the sidewalk plow, so they're right at it. That being said, the salt shed, looks like it's seen better days, so I don't know if we can patch it up at some point, it's, I think, the front, all the steel's starting to come off. The trash can in front of Zeno's, the old Salvation Army, the frame, the metal cage for the trash cans there, but there's no can inside of it, and people keep using it, so they're throwing stuff in there, but it's just kind of like falling out all the time.
It's a recycling can, Chip.
So that was empty today?
Yeah, I noticed it was empty today.
Is it in there now, or are you just going to get rid of the metal?
No, we got a new can.
Um.
Question is, we took the old ones.
List of public health and safety properties, where we, I thought we, at one point, we said we were going to get a list. I did not get a list.
It is.
Could be, I junked, could we, went to my spam or something, but.
What did you, what did you want?
A list of all the properties that are on the public health and safety ordinance.
I can get you a list right after this meeting.
Okay. The Newton and Main lights still don't seem to be sensing, so they're just, they're just cycling through whether there's someone there at the lights or not. So the other day, I turned off federal, and I looked up, and my lights are green, they stayed the green the whole time I came up.
What, they knew the?
They knew it was me.
They knew a council.
You were there, yeah.
That's our effort at customer service.
Fire hydrants, at some point, we should probably consider repainting them, maybe just ask community members if there's one in front of their house that they would like to paint, go ahead and paint it. I don't know what we think about that, but just something to think about, ours is pretty rusty.
Depends on what they painted.
Yeah, I don't care, I'll paint it white with black spots. Two things for Tom while he is here, the north side of the, of Holton Park. The north side of the, of Holton Park, there's a six-foot tall chain link fence that runs the whole length. And there's trees and vines overtaking it, so the trees are pushing it up and the vines are dragging it down. So I know at one time I brought it up, and I know Sue, Sue Smith, which is the one house on South Elm, they're okay with it being cleared, and I had cleared it out. But I think someone may have bought that property on Hunt Street, the, that's, that's furthest west. And at one point, I had cleared all the vines off from that. And Mr. Reynolds loved it because it got rid of the Japanese beetle problem that he had in his garden. But now that there's someone there, I don't know if they want some kind of barrier between them. So if possible, I knew, I do know that if we can clear that off, morning glories grow pretty fast and they come back every year. And same if we were to do clematis, that would be a good barrier, at least in the spring and summer and fall for them. I wouldn't do anything in the, in the winter, but it also helps with some of the activity that goes on in the park. They're not, they're, they're not screened from that type of activity, so in that far corner, a lot of stuff goes on over there.
Chad, I've got a whole bunch of balsam and spruce boughs looking for, um...
Sounds good to me. And last thing is the trash cans in Holton Park. So if you drive by Holton Park right now, there's three trash cans, and they're tipped over in the tennis courts. And usually we haul them out, and it's not that big of a deal in the winter, but in the summer and spring, it's still, there's, they blow over all the time. There's trash all over the park. The kids tip them over upside down so they can climb on top of the building. I don't know if there's a way we can get a more permanent type of trash can, similar to what's here in, in Taylor Park, and also have the ability to put a recycling receptacle, because near the basketball courts, and especially during the two and a half, three months of football, there's a lot of recycling. Well, there's a lot of, yeah, water bottles that just go in the trash. And it might help a little bit.
So do you like these? Is this the right application?
Yeah, these out here are great. I just, you know, I don't want to put extra burden on Public Works either, so, because they're the ones that come down and empty them.
I'm gonna look into it.
Okay. And it just, you know, I just get tired of picking up, everything blows against that north fence, so when a trash can goes down, I can go along there and just, bags and bags of trash. So I think that's it. That's close here, I would say. That's it.
Sure you got it all, okay.
Tom, I would just dovetail on Chad's comments. I thought about the same thing after the gala for last night. We don't have a recycling bin, it's just trash.
Yeah.
So if we had...
In the building, you mean?
In the, in the auditorium mainly. If we had two, maybe, a trash and a, and the recycling bin, I think, I think that'd be a good step in the right direction.
I think it'd be good for all the parks. I mean, they're all used pretty, I mean, Barlow Street, kids are up there playing basketball. I'm sure they're dumping water bottles in the trash. And, and the basketball fields, I don't know, you know, hundreds of Gatorade bottles down there too, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you make sure we all get a copy of that?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I can scan it.
It'd be nice to get it like once a month or once every couple of months too, just to...
No, we can do it all week, weekly, so.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll stick.